City Council to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I proudly introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God and indivisible, and eternal, infinite and eternal.
Ms. Gorman, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Mayor Perotam Rouse.
Here.
Mayor Mario.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
And Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Good. We have a ceremonial item?
Item one, Cycle Mania Month, May 2018.
It's here. Cycle Mania Month 2018. Whereas May is celebrated across the country as National Bike Month, and whereas in Santa Barbara, in conjunction with the national celebration, Traffic Solutions coordinates Cycle Mania, a month-long series of events for the community, by the community, such that every resident can organize and lead a bike event. And whereas organizers of Cycle Mania understand that public health is improved through active transportation, and accordingly gear the event as much to the general public as to bike enthusiasts by including events for beginners and experts alike, as well as residents of all ages. And whereas Cycle Mania leverages partnerships with the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition and Coast, the efforts of volunteers and sponsorship from local companies to coordinate this month of bike rides and educational events, and whereas more than 30 events are planned for Cycle Mania in 2018, including National Bike to School Day on May 9th, the Mayor's Bike Ride on May 16th, and a Bike Challenge BBQ and award ceremony on May 31st. Now therefore, I, Kathy Mario, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Cycle Mania Month in Santa Barbara, and encourage residents to learn more about the bike-related activities taking place throughout the month. Here's your proclamation, and say a few words, please.
Thank you. Laurie LaRiva. Do you want to start? Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mario, and council members. I'm Laurie LaRiva, and I work at Traffic Solutions at SB CAG, and I have been lucky enough to be a part of the Cycle Mania endeavor since 2009. So we are way past 30 rides and events for this month. We've actually surpassed 40 now. They're on the South Coast. Please take a look at the Cycle Mania calendar. We invite you to come out to as many of those as you'd like. In Santa Barbara specifically, there will be the Mayor's Ride on the 16th, and then on the 23rd, a Bike Tour Breakfast that Sonos is hosting. And as Mayor Mario mentioned, we have many business partnerships and nonprofit partnerships, so we invite companies throughout the South Coast to help host these events, and Sonos is going to be doing the local one for us on the 23rd.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you so much. On behalf of the Santa Barbara Bike Coalition, thank you for the proclamation. Cycle Mania, it's kind of a funny word, and all these bike rides, everybody gets to invent their own fantasy bike ride. And Madam Mayor, thank you so much for playing along with me on the Mayor's Bike Ride. I'm very excited about that. Of course, the idea is to inspire others to get out, get on their bike, and I'm looking at you, Councilman Rouse. No, kidding. Kidding. You've already inspired Mayor Fred Shaw in Carpinteria, who's also doing a bike ride, and Jim Richardson in Solvang, so all based on your leadership. Thank you so much.
So our event is Wednesday, May 16th.
At noon.
And so we're meeting noon right here in Delgar Plaza. We're riding down to the pier, the wharf, and having tacos for lunch?
Shrimp tacos.
Shrimp tacos.
That's what I've got. Placed my order already.
And then we're coming.
And then we're going to ride back. Yeah, very simple, accessible, suitable for all ages and abilities.
Thanks. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. (applause).
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item two, employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Each month, I like to recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their work with the city, so I'd like to read names into the record. There's no one here present today to receive their pin in person. With five years of service with the city, David Eng, Planning Technician 2, Community Development Department; Donovan Macaron, Laboratory Analyst 2, Public Works Department; with 10 years of service to the city, Eddie Aguilar, Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator 3, Public Works Department; Amber Anderson, Fire Inspector 1, with the Fire Department; Brian Baxter, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Josh Brusseau, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Seth Gelber, Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator 3, Public Works Department; Ernesto Lozaro, Senior Water Distribution Operator, Public Works Department; Andrew Lee, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Joe Marleitner, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Paul Spinalli, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; and Anthony Trejo, Water Distribution Operator 2, Public Works Department; with 15 years of service to the city, Ramon Bravo, Wastewater Collection System Lead Operator, Public Works Department; and with 20 years of service to the city, Bruce McDonald, Senior Public Works Inspector, Public Works Department.
Thank you, and we're grateful for the public service of our employees. We're proud of you. Next time, I want someone to come and get their pin. It's an honor to have people here. So any changes to the agenda, Mr. Casey?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And we'll move to public comment. Mr. Marin, you're first. Peter Marin, and I think Catherine Marin is giving you her time. You'll have four minutes, and you'll be followed by Phil Walker.
I probably won't need that. As most of you know, I've promised not to speak about RV issues until we file our suit, and then we can talk about terms of a settlement. But another issue has come up overnight, as they periodically do, and apparently people who park in the Safe Parking Program at night down in the waterfront parking areas have been told by a man in a suit who claimed to have authority to tell them that they were not welcome if they were in the Safe Parking Program at night in the waterfront lots to park there anytime in the daytime, even if they paid. Now, as preface to that, I should say that we already know that many of them who park at night in certain specific lots have been told they can't park there during the day, even when they pay. But this is going a step further. I don't know who it comes from. I know people are very upset because, as you know, they have very few places to park in the city of any kind, and if you begin removing lots one by one from them, then they have much more of a problem. I do want to say this. This has been called to the attention of the Safe Parking Program, but I wonder if you also know, I know this very well, because the Committee for Social Justice began the Safe Parking Program about 20 years ago. We had it as a simple program where you just had a place to park. I don't know how many of you have read the list of rules that now accompanies the contract that you must sign for Safe Parking. For instance, once you're in your lot, you may not have visitors of any kind. For instance, once you're in the lot, even if there are two or three vehicles there, you may not go from your vehicle to any of the other vehicles. What it amounts to, in effect, is a Japanese internment camp left over from World War II, or even worse, a kind of Indian reservation. The laws are really quite strenuous and onerous. They take away all kinds of civil rights from people in the program, and I think in general, some of you should take a look at it, because it's gotten out of hand now and is really beyond reason, right? Past that, I hope you will look into this issue, because as things stand, people are really frightened of parking in those lots, and they have very few places to go. One of the guys who was told this, a guy who pays hundreds of dollars a month in order to park his vehicle there during the day, and I don't think you can take away any ordinary citizen rights from people who are just in an RV program, though that's what's happened, and I think you should take a long look at it. Thank you.
I'll follow up on your email.
Thank you.
And you'll be followed by Jacqueline Enda, and Lindsay Rojas will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Some of the, actually, a great deal of the aforementioned city employees for their years of service I've worked with, and a lot of times, they're either working hard, or they work a late shift, and it's difficult to, you know, coordinate the hours and being here for the presentation, but it was always a pleasure to work with those people that I do know, and they work hard for the city and the residents. Okay. There was a gentleman that started off public comment last week. He expressed a lot of concern about the ADUs. He said, I think he mentioned he had 12 going up on his block, but he didn't say what block of town he lived on. I'd be interested to see it. I had an ADU that's been under construction two blocks down on the 1200 block of Quinientos, and I walked by it for weeks, if not months. I didn't even know it was going up. It was very well concealed behind the front house. But the only concern I have is the lack of parking is causing more and more, especially pickups, and there's no contractor staging area available for these shoehorn-type setups where you have very limited space. So a lot of times, the contractors' pickups or even larger trucks park obstructing the sidewalk and/or the apron, and it causes people to have to walk out in the street. It's dangerous. My wife ran into it further down on the east side, walking the dog, and there was a pickup blocking the sidewalk and the apron, so she had to actually go out in the street, and when people are not in tune with the road conditions and paying attention, it gets to be very, very dangerous. Then you have the whole add-on of the parking medians and lack of egress due to, you know, construction on the parking median with, I've seen incredible stuff built on them, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe a permitting process is due. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Enda, come on up. Are you coming together?
Yeah.
Go ahead. You have four minutes.
Mayor, Council. Today, we start our campaign to educate the community on the Coalition's work for the gun buyback. So as the community is aware, we've had some really good, successful gun buybacks, and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition to extend the invitation now to the community at large and to everybody who views the stations, our local access stations, to inform them that we're going to have a gun buyback on May 12th, and anybody can come in as a confidential way to dispose of any weapons that are unwanted in your homes. So thank you very much for your support, and thank you, Council, for your support in moving forward the gun buyback every year.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. So I'm Lindsay Rojas, and I'm just here on behalf of the 805-Undocu Fund to invite the Council and also the community in our, in support of a fundraiser that we're having this Friday, May 4th, from 5 to midnight. It's a dinner dance event, and it's to help fundraise funds for the people who aren't able to receive any type of funding in support from losing all their homes and their jobs due to the natural disasters that we just recently had. And so all the proceeds from this event will be going to assisting these people, and it's through the 805-Undocu Fund. And again, it's this Friday, so you can buy tickets, and they're $45, or if you want to just donate, that's also possible. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Where is the event?
Oh, sorry. It's at the Eagles.
The Eagles Club?
Eagles Club, yes.
And this, Ms. Enda, you mentioned the date, but where and what time?
Ah, thank you. So it is May 12th. It's at the showgrounds. You leave your weapons in your trunk, and you roll up. The police department actually disposes of them, and you don't even have to leave your car. You'll get a gift card for $100 for regular weapons and $200 for assault weapons.
And what time do you start?
We start at 8:00 and at noon.
Great, thank you.
Entrance C.
And if you take those flyers to Holly, she'll copy them and put them in our mailboxes.
Okay.
So that way, we'll have the details.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, that closes public comment for today, and we have the consent calendar next. You'll read some items, ma'am.
Yes. Item three, introduction of ordinance regarding proposed Second Amendment to lease agreement number 23564 with Kanye Vineyards, Inc. Recommendation that the Council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the waterfront director to execute a Second Amendment to lease agreement number 23564 with Conway Vineyards, Inc., to increase the premises by 610 square feet and the base rent to $87,959.70 annually for the leased space at 217G Sterns Wharf, commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. And also, item number seven, which is adoption of a resolution to set a date for a public hearing regarding renewal of levy for fiscal year 2019 for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment. Recommendation that Council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof. Preliminary approving the updated engineer's report, stating intention to continue assessments for fiscal year 2019, and establishing a time of 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, in the City Council chambers for a public hearing on the Wildland Fire Suppression Agreement Assessment.
Thanks. Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes, Mayor Mario, I need to pull item seven and note that my home is within the Wildland Fire District, and I have been advised that I have a conflict of interest on this item.
Okay. And Mr. Hart?
I'd like to pull item number five, please.
And, okay, okay. We have an email from Melinda Guzman. Are you here, ma'am? Okay. So there is no request to speak on number four. It's, well, I guess I have to have you read it if I'm going to make a comment about it. So would you read four and five, please? Yeah, thanks.
Certainly. Item four, Agreement for Workers' Compensation Claims Administration. And item five, Professional Services Agreement with RRM Design Group to Develop Master Plans for Ottega Park and Dwight Murphy Field.
Okay. So we'll go in order. I'll just say that Ms. Guzman is objecting to us changing the contractor that we use to do our workers' compensation administration, but if there's no objection from the City Council, we'll go forward with staff recommendation. And number five, go ahead. Mr. Hart?
Yes, I just had some questions for staff about this. You know, I think that having a master plan for Dwight Murphy and Ottega Park is a great idea, completely support it, but I'm curious about the context of these master plans in relation to other parks in the city. We recently had a discussion about Franceski Park and working on a master plan for that. I think there is also work being done on Veronica Midda's open space and sort of a master plan concept. I'm curious about Bonnet Park and where it is in the status of that, and then even potentially Oak Park and Mackenzie Park. It occurs to me that we are entering a new moment in time with Measure C and the potential to have capital funds available to really do these projects, so that the capital program for the city is different than it was before, where we were having many, many aspirational goals, but no funding source to really get to many of those projects. And now we do. And so I think the question of which parks are getting master plans and how we're queuing up all of these potential capital investments is much more important now. So I'd like to know what the Parks Director's thinking about all these things and how they relate to each other. So thank you.
Ms. Zachary?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart and council members. To begin, the master plan concept for Ottega Park and Dwight Murphy has grown over a number of years. We started off really looking at field improvements, and Bonnet Park was part of that. Once we started peeling back the layers of the various issues that we have at both of those sites, the fact that they are significant in size, they are used both locally, and Dwight, in some cases, could be considered almost a regional park because it is a sports facility, looking at not just the fields, but the fact that we have a lot of infrastructure that is in pretty poor condition and quite old, and a lot of dysfunction at both of those sites, really lent itself to looking at, we really need to take a comprehensive approach to what we do in both of these parks. And then also, as the staff report indicates, we had interest from the Gwendolyn Strong Foundation in finding a location for a universally accessible playground. Dwight Murphy is the most appropriate location to really scope that out because of its access, its parking, the potential for an updated restroom facility. Again, layering that in and realizing just doing bits and pieces of any one of these parks was not the best way to go. So that's that master plan concept. As far as our other locations, we're still, we're working on the master plan, updating the master plan for Franceski Park. That will go forward in fiscal year 19 as well. We're in the process of wrapping up the creek design portion of the open space, Robro Open Space, and that's kind of our first phase for master planning that area, and a contract will be before Council, I believe, in July to do that work, since that's significant. As far as our other locations, we have a number of projects that are currently in design. In fact, all of the funds that we've asked for through the general fund allocation is really to get us through design, permitting, construction documents, with the idea that securing the funds to actually build these projects, because they will be significant investments for the city. We'll be ready to do all those things in one to two years. Another example is some of the facility renovations. We have one underway, of course, at the Cabrillo Pavilion, but the Corio Gym is another example of a facility that needs to be sort of master planned in terms of what you do to it structurally, but also what kind of programs and services that you provide there. And then we have other recreation facilities that we're working on. Oak Park, different types of work have occurred there in terms of renovating the group picnic area, doing the creek restoration. Our next key phase, rather than sort of redoing that whole park, because parts of it work really, really well, is looking at the tennis courts and then also the German Friendship Picnic Area. That section of the park is one that hasn't had a lot of attention in many years and would be something that we'll be bringing forward in the next six-year capital program. So that's a little snapshot. As part of our budget presentation can certainly provide you with a broader picture.
Well, maybe that's the best thing to answer my questions, is the context of the budget presentation, because in my, you know, day job in my world, the projects that are shovel-ready get funding. And so what gets shovel-ready is a decision about funding. And so to me, this isn't a decision about a future capital investment that I want to understand in context. Rather than doing the master plan, having expectations that that, that once you've invested $300,000, there's momentum to doing that capital project, I'd really like to understand how all these pieces fit together over a longer planning horizon, to understand, you know, what that investment today means. So personally, I'd rather hold this item for that discussion about the budget, to understand this in context, but I'd like to hear what others think about it.
Mr. Casey, did you have something to add?
I was just going to mention that another moving piece on this is the Measure C capital planning that you will be seeing this budget year for the first time, and I just want to temper expectations that we're going to have money to implement all of these Parks projects in the immediate near future. There's just a lot of demands on Measure C already, and so there will have to be priorities met and set for funding the capital portion of these projects, or pursue grant opportunities, as the Parks Department is very good at pursuing. And so I just want to temper the expectation that just because we're master planning, that there will be money to implement immediately, these projects.
That's a great point, and I know there is a Parks Bond that's going to be on the ballot in June, and that's another potential funding source. So this, having these projects ready, I understand the tension here. You know, we want to be in a position to be able to compete effectively for those grant cycles, and maybe that's an even better thing to put the context in. If you could give us in your budget presentation a better understanding of what that Parks Bond means to potential grant applicants and what the timetable is for that, and what we might, you know, need to do in anticipation of that, to be one of the first communities ready to compete for that. That's been a really effective strategy, you know, at the SB CAG world, and would hope we'd have the same success at the city with the Parks Investments.
So you're suggesting that we hold voting on this until we hear a presentation at the Parks Budget Hearing?
Yeah, I personally, I'd just like to understand the context of all this. You know, I think, as Mr. Casey made the good point, you know, I was actually thinking that Measure C would help advance these projects, but there are a lot of competing demands, number one, streets and the police stations. So we are going to have to be very strategic and very careful in what projects we advance under what timetable, and I just, I'm not personally comfortable understanding how all these pieces fit together. Maybe I should have had this conversation before the meeting, but we have our budget hearing pretty soon, and I think we can get into depth in that at that point in time, so.
Okay. Mr. Friedman, you had your light on first. Are you talking on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for bringing these projects forward. I do support the projects, but I actually was going to propose what Councilmember Hart did, but for a completely different reason. And as I was reading the staff reports over the weekend, it also occurred to me that there's another issue that comes up pretty much every week, and it's been, and I've been having conversations with different community members, and it has to do with our plan or our vision for downtown. And one of the issues that's come up is to hire a consultant to really look at downtown in terms of doing basically SWOT analysis, looking at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats to downtown, and looking at what other jurisdictions are doing. But what also comes back, and Mr. Casey does a good job of reminding us every week, is that our budget is very slim, as it is going forward from now. We just went to finance and saw how slim it really is going forward. And in order to do that, we'd have to come up with some type of revenue or funding source to fund a consultant if our Council wanted to do this. And so I was asking if, I wanted to ask if we could delay this as part of our budget, this item, as part of our budget deliberations, but also give, ask if our City Minister could come back and just help us understand what it would cost to hire a consultant and the different options we have as part of that. And the reason is that I, is if there are other funding sources, such as a Parks Bond that could fund these projects, or we could perhaps go forward with one of these and use the funding to hire someone to come in and start looking at downtown and the strategic plan for downtown, I want to have that discussion this year, but without having funds identified, I don't know if we can. So before we commit these funds, I think it's an important conversation for our Council to have, to say, hey, we have limited funding, but at the same time, we need to look at our priorities, and is having a consultant looking at downtown and really providing back what we can do in that area something that we should be looking at? And I think that would be conducive for both of these as part of the budget. And I'll kind of give a quote from Father, I love to give quotes from people. Father, I guess it's kind of my MO now. Someone told me they play a bingo game on Council, and I asked what my bingo, my bingo number is, and they said it's, anytime I say I'm quoting somebody, so.
Please, go ahead.
I'll give a quote from Father Ted Hesburgh, who was the President of University of Notre Dame from 1952 to 1987, and a founding member of the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, among other things. And he said that the very essence of leadership is you've got to have a vision. It's a vision that you articulate clearly and forcefully on every occasion. You can't blow an uncertain trumpet. And I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I don't know if there's a single person in the City of Santa Barbara who can come forward and clearly articulate forcefully the vision of what downtown is going to be. And I do hear a lot of uncertain trumpets being blown when we talk about downtown right now. So with that, I'd hope my colleagues would entertain continuing this item, but also support having some more information on what a consultant would cost to look at downtown as well. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Zachary, it says here in the report, there's adequate funding in the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year 2018 Capital Improvement Program to cover the cost of the subject contract. So the item we're looking at right now, there's money in a Parks Fund. Is that what I'm understanding?
Madam Mayor, yes. As part of our fiscal year 18 budget, funds were allocated and approved by Council to move forward with these projects. A couple of things that I might add for Council's consideration. We have a lot of community interest in us addressing the issues at these parks. Ottega Park in particular has suffered for many years from misuse issues, and we have safety considerations. Absent of just going in and doing one thing, we really felt the opportunity of a master plan would engage a broad range of stakeholders in being able to move forward with a vision for this park. Particularly, the neighborhood has changed, similar to what's the future of downtown. This neighborhood has changed since the city acquired the property in 1902, and not a lot of effort has spent, been spent on really making that park serve that area. And similarly- This neighborhood has changed since the city acquired the property in 1902, and not a lot of effort has spent, been spent on really making that park serve that area. And similarly with Dwight Murphy Field, one of the key issues, and I neglected to mention this, is we have very limited soccer field space in Santa Barbara. It is kind of our soccer field, and we've been asked to look at, put in artificial turf on any number of occasions. Part of this process will allow us to do that. The advantage is, if it's feasible and funded, of course, is that we can program that park a lot more than we currently program it today. There are periods of time where we have to shut it down. We can't let anyone play in that. So these things have been sort of fermenting over a number of years, and it may seem a bit disjointed today based on all the other things we're working on, but that's kind of the genesis of it. And then, of course, having the Gwendolyn Strong Foundation come forward and want to be part of both designing and funding improvements at the park helped generate us a recommendation to move forward. A couple of weeks ago, you did have Bonnet Park on your agenda for moving that project to construction documents, and then similarly, the West Beach Splash Playground.
So the funds that you're identifying today wouldn't necessarily be used for a visioning for downtown. I mean, I love that idea. Councilmember Rouse and I are working on downtown issues, Councilmember Friedman. But go ahead, we have Mr. Dominguez's light on, and then we also have a public comment speaker. And your light is on too, before the public comment speaker? Okay. So, Mr. Dominguez.
So one of the things I wanted to ask was about the timeline. It sounds like there's a couple members who want to delay this. And it's my understanding that we're getting the vendor to do this on a fairly expedited process. I saw in some cities, it takes two to three years, and we're shooting to have this done, if I'm correct, by the end of this year. So it's great that they've committed to doing this, and the advantage of having it done by the end of this year is then it's in the system for next year's budget discussion so we can actually get this moving a year ahead of time, or at least in the budget through a normal process on track. So to me, that really, that's really important, that we stick to a timeline where there is actually a plan that we don't get off the plan. And particularly, the parks that you've mentioned are in the AUD area, which has been and is going to be impacted by greater population growth and hopefully families. And really, we want to give these folks and the existing residents adequate park resources. And as you've indicated, some of these buildings are no longer operable, so it's really, this is really delayed in my mind. This could have been or should have been done years ago. We now have adequate resources to do it. It's in the budget, so I really hope we can stick to the plan and vote yes on this today.
Ms. Sneddon.
I would also like to echo that last statement, there's adequate funding in the Parks and Rec budget now. And then to Councilmember Friedman's point, I mean, I think, I agree, there's no strong vision for downtown, but perhaps that's because we haven't had master plans and this integrated approach of, that Ms. Zachary and the Parks and Rec Department has laid out of continually looking at these issues and making master plans along the way, which I commend. And we may not be able to do them all at once, but to have a plan in place. And for Dwight Murphy Field, it was not safe. It was not safe for families. I mean, we've been there for softball games and different games. You couldn't go in the restrooms. It was, it's not a safe park, and I'm looking forward to when it will be. And I applaud your efforts, and I'd like to move forward with it today.
Okay, very good. Mr. Friedman, your light's on?
I just wanted to, when I do support these projects, I don't want to let anyone know that I don't support them, but I just wanted to clarify that the funding that is allocated for these, it is general fund, isn't it? And so it could actually be used for this purpose, correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman, yes, the money was from the general fund, so it's been allocated to the Parks and Recreation Department for this project, but that's why we're here to get your approval or nonapproval for it, and that's up to council's direction.
So my question to my colleagues is, I'm willing to support these, but I also feel that right now is the time that, you talk about master plans, Councilmember Sneddon, if we don't do something for downtown this year as part of our budget process, we, it makes it harder to do it a year from now because there are a lot of critical issues. The same issues that we're raising for these parks are the same issues we're hearing for downtown, and it's been happening for a long time. So I thought this was a possibility to do that. But the one thing I would like to ask out of this conversation is if regardless of how we vote on this, if we could as part of the budget deliberations, ask Mr. Casey to come back with an item on what it would cost for a consultant to come back and do an analysis of downtown and come back with recommendations so we can at least consider that as part of our budget process.
Okay. Mr. Rouse, because you haven't weighed in yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, as far as the greater plan and whatnot, I mean, I've been around in my corner long enough to have been tortured through the Paso Nuevo Acquisition Project and then Plan Santa Barbara, the implementation of Plan Santa Barbara, as well as all the stuff we stuck into the adaptive management plan. So there have been plans. We disparticipated in an architect charrette, which will let you know how disparate the ideas are. They're creative ideas, they're wonderful ideas, but we could get lost in the weeds with mission creep while we have something here that speaks to what our citizens need sooner than later. And that's an upgraded Ortega Park for sure, because that cries out for improvement now, as does Dwight Murphy and, of course, Bonnet Park. These are heavily-used citizen amenities that are not going to wait for us to get together and figure out our next plan for downtown. Like I said, I've sat through three, you know, basically real comprehensive plans for downtown, and it's evolving, it's been a lot of years, and I get that, and you're not wrong. Now, we did the parking lots, we got stuff going back into the '60s to respond to retail threats from elsewhere and trying to figure out what transportation is going to look like and changed all the parking. So we've been there, done that, and we'll go there again, but right now, I don't think is actually the time. We're not even sure what the future is going to look like. It just changed radically with the retail atmosphere. So I would like to see this go forward as Ms. Zachary's already got a reasonably comprehensive plan and strategy of going forward. We have, the money is identified for design, and people, Mr. Dominguez pointed this out, people want this now or yesterday, and not, especially in Ortega Park where you're talking about a very vital neighborhood next to a school that really needs to be improved and improved right now. So I'd like to see this go forward.
We can come back to council discussion. I'd just like to honor our public speaker, Victoria Strong. Are you out there? And you're representing the Gwendolyn Strong Foundation.
Yes, and I hope this will help some of the budget concerns. So my name is Victoria Strong, and my husband, Bill, and I are the founders of the Gwendolyn Strong Foundation. After our daughter, Gwendolyn, was diagnosed with spinal muscular atrophy, excuse me, we created the foundation, and we raised several million dollars to fund research that has since produced a treatment and a cure for what was previously completely dire. In Gwendolyn's memory, we have now set our sights on building a universally accessible playground and updating the fields in Santa Barbara, which would be the very first in the county. And this would be our gift to the city in Gwendolyn's memory. Gwendolyn, who was born in Santa Barbara, had profound physical disabilities because of SMA, a neuromuscular disease much like ALS. Though SMA affected nearly every muscle movement, it never hindered Gwendolyn's social nature, love of play, sense of adventure, and desire to be just one of the kids. Santa Barbara has many beautiful parks, but for a progressive city, it is actually quite shocking that none of them are accessible. We took one onto every playground here until we started to avoid them. Kids World was her neighborhood playground, and we walked or drove by it daily, and she always wanted to go. But let me explain our experience. First, we were met with bumps and steps that would bop her around in her wheelchair or were a full barrier. Next, her wheelchair would get stuck in the bark before we were anywhere near the play equipment. My husband and I would each take an end and lift her wheelchair out of, and all of her machines, over the steps, over all of the bark, to the swing. Then we'd take off her pole socks, which meant we didn't know how well she was doing, and position her suction machine ready for an emergency. I would sit on the swing, and then Bill would lift her out of her wheelchair and place her in my lap. He'd hold her breathing machine on his shoulder and push us as far as he could without pulling her breathing tube off. Just like every child, Gwendolyn loved it. She would light up and giggle as the wind blew her hair, and I'd cheer and smile, all while watching for the vaguest sign of distress. On a good day, we'd also tackle the slide. This meant taking deep breaths of courage, removing her breathing machine entirely, knowing she could only manage for a limited time without it. Walking up the stairs while navigating the length of her body in a flat as possible position, repositioning at the top of the slide and going for it. She'd squeal with delight. Once was always enough for us, though never for her. Then we'd need to reload her and all of her equipment and carry her wheelchair over obstacles once again. As she grew, this became more and more challenging, and it broke our hearts. All children should get to play. We visited other cities and always sought out barrier-free experiences for our family. And there are some magnificent playgrounds that go far beyond the minimum ADA requirements and truly benefit all children. Outdoor play is the foundation for development, rich with social, emotional lessons. Everyone in a community benefits from the elimination of social stigmas and prejudices, and this naturally happens when people of all abilities have the chance to play together. Despite all of the tremendous benefits that integrated play brings, there are still relatively few universally accessible playgrounds and none in Santa Barbara County.
Thank you, Ms. Strong.
Can I finish one last sentence?
Please, yeah.
Santa Barbara has our heart. Our life with Gwendolyn here was met with kindness, inclusion, and acceptance, and we believe adding a truly innovative playground that mirrors these qualities is a natural fit for our beautiful progressive city. And we look forward to working with the city, with Parks and Recreation, and the community to turn this much-needed dream into an inclusive reality for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Zachary, that's planned for the Dwight Murphy Park, right? An accessible?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, yes, as part of it. This is the one location in our city park system that has all of the right combination of amenities to put a playground of some size and, as well as make the other improvements to the park.
Okay. And we'll continue our discussion, but I'd like to jump in because I haven't had my say that I would go forward with today's recommendations and then have a good look at it, Mr. Hart in the Parks Budget and Mr. Friedman, look at how we can find money for a visioning process. And Councilmember Rouse and I are taking the lead on downtown vitality, and we haven't given you a, we haven't given you a report yet, but we've been, we've been busy, so. Mr. Hart and then Mr. Dominguez.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Strong for their very generous gift, potential gift, and working with us to do a really important addition to the city's park system. And I do think it does make sense that we can go forward today, but I do want to plant the seed that we're spending money to develop a plan that's going to require funding to construct, and we're going to have to figure out, you know, here, the priority of how we do that. And I think that is what I'm really trying to raise the point of, is that we're investing $300,000 to develop a master plan. We have to have a plan to implement the master plan, or we'll have a document on a shelf. And there will be choices. There, every park in the city has old infrastructure. Every neighborhood in the city deserves park improvements, and we're going to have to decide amongst ourselves where those, what the prioritization of that is. And that's what I think we need to have a bigger conversation about in the budget deliberations.
Well said. Mr. Dominguez?
I want to thank the speaker and her family from, from the bottom of my heart for the work that you've done, taking the situation and doing fundraising and having a plan and executing it. You're a real example to the county and the city of Santa Barbara, so thank you. I'm honored that that playground will be built in a park in my district and really close to where I live, as a matter of fact. So I wanted to start with that. In terms of downtown, that's news to me, that the mayor and Mr. Rouse are working on downtown vitality. Please let me in on the secret, since most of downtown, or I have the most downtown in my district, so I'd be glad to get involved in that.
Yes.
And I think I have been working with multiple businesspeople and community groups. So please let me in on the little secret. Unfortunately, this council voted to not act quickly on the residential component of downtown, which is, I think, the biggest chunk. On the night we voted on it, I wanted to keep it with council so we could act proactively and move quickly, but I was outvoted and it was sent to Planning Commission, so we probably won't see it or anything happen this year.
Okay. I'm concerned we're not agenda-ized to discuss that.
So if that's something that you really want to see happen this year, maybe you should bring it back to council instead of sending it to Planning Commission. So put your money where your mouth is. So on that, I'm happy to make the motion on this item, or do you want to?
We could do the whole consent calendar except for number seven. Would you do that?
I'd make a motion to accept the consent calendar except item seven.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That looked unanimous. And now you need to recuse yourself. Mr. Kalan?
Madam Mayor, I also reside in the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District, so I'll be recusing myself. Because this is a consent item, neither Councilmember Sneddon or I have to leave the room.
Okay. Is there any discussion about number seven, the, to refresh the memory of the public, setting a date for the hearing regarding the renewal of the levy for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to send it forward.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
And a second from Mr. Rouse. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And an abstention? Okay.
Is it an abstention? No.
Mr. Kalan, is it an abstention?
The recusal for conflict of interest? No, it's recorded, it is not participating.
Okay, so just not participating. Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Gorman, thank you for catching me on that. So we're done with the consent calendar, it looks like. Do we have a report from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today to look at the revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year and future years, and it was really just a report from the Finance Committee, or the Finance Staff, and we'll be looking at other elements of the budget as we meet in the future.
Very good. Ms. Gorman, the next item?
Yes, next item is number 10, City of Santa Barbara Access Advisory Committee Update.
Very good. Mr. Wiltshire, am I saying your name correctly?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Let me get this presentation up here. Yeah, my name is Mike Wiltshire. I'm the Facilities and Energy Manager with the city. I've also taken on the responsibility of the city ADA coordinator, and I'm the staff representative for the Access Advisory Committee. The main reason for this presentation today is to kind of provide an update on the Access Advisory Committee, its role within the city, and to provide a little bit of awareness of the committee and what we're doing as a city for accessibility. I'll be leading the presentation, but we do have our chair, Jim Marston, is here. So feel free to stop me anytime if you have questions as I go through the presentation. A brief outline, we'll all cover a little bit of a history of the Access Advisory Committee, go over the role of the Access Advisory Committee, and discuss some recent achievements from this past year, and then discuss what we're looking to do going forward. So the Access Committee formed in some shape or form in 1988 as an ad hoc committee to assist the ABR with access-related issues, and it was formalized as a standing committee in 2001. Along with all of this timing, something I'd like to bring attention to is this, the, is, this was, a lot of this was in response to the Federal ADA Americans with Disability Act law, which came into, came into law in 1990. The ADA law is a law that's promoting, prohibiting discrimination against people with disabilities in all areas of public life, so that's jobs, schools, transportation, public areas. And even more specifically, the Americans with Disability Act Title II applies specifically to state and local government. So a lot of what we do and a lot of what drives our work with accessibility is this ADA Title II, which kind of focuses on program accessibility to ensure that city programs and services are accessible. Facility accessibility, so that ensures that newly constructed facilities are built to an accessible standard. And also looking at existing facilities. So the delineation there is buildings than facilities that were, that were built before They only need to be modified if it is a way to ensure program accessibility or if there is some level of major renovation at that facility. So that 1992 mark is kind of a delineation between new facilities and old. new facilities and old and existing facilities. I'd also like to kind of draw some attention to, there's a couple competing, not competing, but a couple governing codes. So, it's the California Building Code, which looks more at facilities without a parcel. And then there's the ADA Code, which is the overall federal arching code. They're designed to complement each other and work with each other, but there is some nuance there that I wanted to bring to your attention that we're trying to meet both of these codes, but ultimately the ADA federal code should be the overarching. Some more information about the committee. So, the committee is made up of seven city-appointed members. Our current chairman, Jim Marston, is in the audience here. We currently have one vacancy, so we are recruiting for another member. The committee meets quarterly. Our council liaison is Councilmember Jason Dominguez, and I myself am the staff liaison. The role of the Access Committee, the role of the Access Committee is really to assist and advise staff on projects in city facilities and projects in the public right away. A lot of this stems from the ADA Title II, so they provide assistance and support with program accessibility, facility project accessibility, and things on that nature. So, it's a fantastic resource that, with people in the disabled community allowing to, coming to weigh in on these sorts of projects and getting their perspective on what these projects mean to Some recent achievements, and this is all stuff that has occurred mainly in the last year, but some of these projects date further back. The Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House Plan Review, this was a giant project, and it's underway in construction right now. The city began meeting with the Access Committee in 2015, so roughly three years ago, so early on in the design process. The committee added a lot of insight on signage, pathways, a lot of accessibility input that's going to be, that's going to come to fruition with construction now with this project. Some of the examples that where assistance was provided from the Access Advisory Committee to the project team was restaurant seating plan, ADA signage, ramping layouts, and other accessibility measures that are being implemented with this project. Another item of interest is accessible parking and enforcement. So, the committee's worked with staff, includes Public Works and police staff, on issues with accessible parking and the city's stock on blue curb parking. So, they've reviewed the blue curb map in detail and provided really meaningful support to the city and Public Works on the status of some of this blue curb parking and often some improvements to this blue curb parking Public Works capital projects, the city and Public Works regularly meets with the Access Advisory Committee to provide updates and look for feedback on current and future projects. This includes things like sidewalk infill. And just to get kind of a little bit of dialogue and feedback on the practicality of all this, sometimes it helps direct prioritization of these projects. So, it's just a great resource having the committee look at these projects from the point of view of the disabled community. One of the current, an ongoing effort with the downtown parking staff is the Accessibility Advisory Committee is working with the valet parking ordinance. So, they're providing support with accessible valet operations and providing advice and assisting with downtown parking on putting together this ordinance. And we'll be meeting again next week, and there's an item on the Access Advisory Committee on this, the downtown parking valet ordinance. So, the committee will have another chance to weigh in on some of the verbiage and the practicality of what this ordinance is going to look like. And also more recently, streets and sidewalk maintenance prioritization. With the implementation, possible implementation of Measure C funds, it's becoming quite apparent that the Access Advisory Committee will provide a lot of assistance on street upgrades and sidewalk upgrades. And the goal here is for them to assist with prioritization of key areas. And they're really the people who are out in the community looking at it from this angle. And so, they provide a lot of support and recently have formed an ad hoc subcommittee with the Streets and Infrastructure and Operations Manager, Jim Dewey. And they've been meeting to compile a pretty thorough list, which will help the city to prioritize these sorts of repairs. And internally, we've focused on improving access to our committee materials and meetings. So, we've recently made meeting audio available online, which has been, had a lot of great feedback from the committee and the public to be able to access those meetings, not only during the meeting, but have some audio access after the fact. We've kind of revised our meeting minute process to make the output a little more clear and accessible to those who want to read them. And we're working on updating the city website to be a little more clear and accessible for those with disabilities. Our, looking forward, some of the goals that we have for the coming year and moving into the future. The last time our governing resolution was revised was in 2008, so it's roughly 10 years old. The committee is interested in doing some minor revisions to that, potentially with term limits and revising some city staff contacts, because the city staff used to be run out of the city administrator's office. And so, there's some nuances there that could change to make it a little more clear. And we're looking to revise our requirements for applicant's background. We have a solid team, but recruiting for this position has been hard. It's tough to find qualified applicants. We don't necessarily want to hem them in by having, currently, we need, the resolution calls for two members from the architectural community, two from the disabled community, and three from the public at large. So, kind of removing those barriers or requirements would maybe allow us to have a little more stock, a little more members to apply. The committee is looking to continue providing accessibility input on city projects moving forward, and certainly continue to provide city staff with identifying accessibility issues with streets and sidewalks. And in light of the recent events, it became apparent how important accessible resources were during emergency response with the Thomas Fire and Montecito debris flow. It became really apparent. There was a lot of positive feedback from the committee on how well the disabled community was attended to, but there's always room for feedback and growth in that area. And so, in conclusion, that wraps up our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about the Access Advisory Committee or our goals going forward. And I know we do now have a couple members from the committee in the crowd. So, thank you.
Are there questions for staff? Or would any of the members of the committee like to come up and make a statement?
Yeah, I would like to formally introduce our Chair, Jim Marston, and then another committee member, Barbara Silver. So, thank you for participating.
You're welcome to come up. Did you want to say something?
Yes, if you'd like to go first.
Say your name, please.
My name is Barbara Silver.
Okay.
When I was appointed, reappointed to this committee, I had two main goals. One was to get out an annual report. This is the first one in quite a few years. And also better orientation materials for the committee. Right now, we have an opening on the committee. And anybody looking to see what they needed to know would have a hard time doing it. So, that's still ongoing. Then there's a little issue about the constitution of our committee, where our chairman is constrained. Our committee is different from other committees. Nobody has looked at this one for quite a while. So, that's a concern of ours going forward. And also the terms of service, we would like to extend it another year, but we don't have a clear process for how to make our recommendations known. So, that's another thing that's in progress, how communication works for this committee. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. If there's no any, oh, come on up, Mr. Marston.
Mike's been with us for a little bit over a year now, and I think we're growing very well. We've had much more interaction and proactivity than before. So, there's still a lot of things to change, but I think we're doing good. And Mike mentioned the emergency situation with the fire and the mudslide, and how many people thought that a good job was done to deal with the disabled community. And at the same meeting Mike mentioned, which is next Friday at 9:30 at the Gebhardt Room, we're also going to have, I think, still, information from Yoli, is it? Emergency Management Services. But she's looking for input from the disabled community. I talked to some people who are deaf today. We're going to have people from the Independent Living Resource Center there to give stories about how they were served much better than before. So, I think we started out really good with this emergency problem, and I think we're going to handle on how to deal with the public. So, if you're interested in that kind of feedback, come to our meeting at 9:30 at the Gebhardt Room.
This Friday. And Yoli McGlinchey, our fire emergency communication and outreach person, is coming?
Madam Mayor, council, the meeting is next Friday, May 11th, at 9:30.
Okay, May 11.
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving on the council. Thank you, Mr. Wiltshire, for your report. And we've received it. Grateful. Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've had the pleasure of being the liaison to this committee. So, I want to start by thanking the Chair and Committee Member Silver for being here today and for all the hard work you're doing on the committee. I want to thank Mr. Wiltshire. Since you've taken over, you've helped implement some changes, which I think have made the committee more effective and stronger. So, I'm excited about that. And as regards to the work that's still is being requested by the committee, Mr. Casey, do we need any council support for that, or is staff able to drive that at the current level without our intervention?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Dominguez, I think that we can work on that at the staff level, and we're still working on that with the committee. The revisions of the resolution, we're kind of putting that together right now. So, that's something that could be handled just simply by bringing that back to council. As far as communication goes, we're working on that. Every day and every meeting, it seems to improve. So, I'd like to give that a little time and work with the committee on that. I don't think it needs to be elevated just yet, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Just our thanks again. And that concludes this item. Madam Clerk, we're on number 11 on our agenda.
Item, excuse me, item 11, transfer and appropriation of funds for construction of light industrial buildings at 6100 Hollister Avenue.
Okay. And whenever you're ready. You say your name, Bullers?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Bullers, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. My name's Tom Bullers. I'm an administrative analyst at the airport. Here to talk to you today a little bit about our 6100 Hollister Avenue development. So, our purpose today is to talk about a possible appropriation of money from the general fund to the airport, subject to repayment, to fully fund Phase One of our 6100 Hollister Avenue development. So, just a little quick background on 6100 Hollister. In 2014, council approved the sale of eight acres of land to Direct Relief. From that, we received about $8.7 million. That was used as seed money to create an airport development fund. The $8.7 million is being initially used to fund light industrial construction. And then the revenue from that construction will be split between future development and the airport operating fund. So, this is just an aerial photograph of our project location. It's the area highlighted in orange there. So, just to put it in a little context, the airport administration building is located here. And then the airport's long-term two parking lot is over here. The site plan for the full development is nine buildings and about 47,000 square feet of buildings. The, most of the development is light industrial development with the exception of two buildings on the corner here, which would be retail development. So, at the corner of Frederick Lopez and Hollister, and at David Love Place and Hollister. We received two bids in January for Phase One construction, so that was up to five buildings. We had alternates, and really, we're trying to accommodate building as much as we could with our $8.7 million proceeds. The bid was awarded to Toma Construction for $5.4 million, and that included buildings one, two, and three. But it left buildings four and five outside of the budget. And the total for those two is about $3.4 million. So, in March, we ordered, awarded a contract to Toma Construction. They began construction about two weeks ago on buildings one, two, and three, so about 3,800 square feet of retail, and then 4,400 square feet of light industrial development for each of buildings two and three. Their contract also included some site-wide improvements for stormwater, landscaping, and public sidewalks, and then also some infrastructure associated with the buildings, like parking and lighting. So, just to kind of highlight where those buildings are on the map, buildings one, two, and three, they're the easternmost portion of the site. And the two buildings that we're looking to fund from, an appropriation from the general fund, would be these two buildings in the middle of the site. These are buildings four and five. So, these buildings are 4,700 square feet each of light industrial space. That cost also included the infrastructure associated with those particular buildings, like parking lots and sidewalks and lighting. Again, when we bid this in January, the bid alternative cost $3.4 million, and that exceeded our budget by about $3 million. So, during the fiscal year 2019 budget development process, we started talking with the city finance department about ways that we could possibly make up that $3 million shortfall and build those other two buildings. And sort of, our proposed solution is a $3.1 million essentially loan from the general fund to the airport fund. We're looking at possibly a 3.5% interest rate over a nine-year term, and it would include some capitalized interest. The loan would be repaid from the revenues from those five buildings, the airport development fund. And then it would also be backed by the, backstopped by the airport operating fund and its reserves. So, this is just to look at a couple scenarios over a 15-year sort of intermediate timeframe. The first scenario would be building the current three buildings that we're building right now. And then the other one is if we were able to get this loan and build the five buildings. So, the airport operating fund, under these scenarios, would generate a little bit more money, about $200,000, over that 15-year period versus the five buildings. The development fund would generate significantly more money, $5.5 million. But it would also have to pay $3.7 million in debt service back to the general fund. So, after 15 years, that would leave a development fund balance of about $1.8 million, $800,000 less than sort of the three-building status quo scenario. But we'd have two extra buildings built at the end of that. And then finally, over the 15-year term, the five buildings would generate about $2.7 million more in total revenues over that time period. We plan on including sort of this analysis in our fiscal year 19 budget presentation next week, to kind of show the impacts on the airport operating fund. And then our next steps for the project, if we could possibly do a change order for the construction contract, we'd do that. Or we might have to bid the project, but we definitely have to come back to council to award a contract for buildings four and five. And then we'd also be asking that council refer this to Finance Committee to kind of discuss the actual terms and finalize those terms. And then ultimately, we'd return to council for a resolution to memorialize those terms. So, that'll take any questions. So that'll take any questions.
Mr. Hart has a question.
How was the 3.5% interest rate determined? And what is the current loan for the airport, what is the rate of the current loan for the airport terminal?
The current terminal rate is about 5% for the terminal bonds. We also have a city loan for the rental car quick-turn facility, and that's a 3.5% interest.
Has there been any discussion ever with finance about renegotiating or that initial airport terminal loan, refinancing that at a different rate? They all look at each other.
So we've actually been exploring refinancing the terminal bond. That is not a city loan, that's a wider bond, so it's a little more of a work effort, but we're looking into.
So that is not a general fund loan? It's just the rental car facility that is?
Yes.
And so there's a bond for the 5% rate for the terminal? Okay.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we are currently working with financial advisors, and we will be bringing to you, not to distance futures, some contracts to hire financial advisors underwriters to see if we can refinance those bonds, maybe this summer or next summer, and save some, the airport some money on an annual basis because of lower interest rates.
Okay, thank you. And then was there, has there been discussion about doing the other remaining projects on this? Now that you're talking about loaning and looking ahead, and obviously, more buildings is more revenue, but where's the sweet spot? Why did you pick 5 as opposed to 6 or 9?
So when we looked at the annual payments, the loan repayment amounts, five buildings really kind of hit that sweet spot of generating enough revenue from those five buildings to pay the debt service. Any more buildings would not generate enough revenue to pay the debt service on a timely basis.
And, you know, we are going to be using general fund reserves for this loan, so it'll be policy reserves. We don't have reserves above policy. And once you get above $3 million, $4 million, I mean, we're talking another several million dollars for the rest of the buildings. I would be concerned with tying up that kind of money in the reserves. We're also have, maybe having to come up with some money on a, sort of on a short-term basis for the Cabrioir's Pavilion, which will be paid back over the next five years for completing the facility. So I just, it's a matter for me at least of tying up all that money on a long-term basis.
So is that the driver, the cap on the impact of the general fund, or is it more the other half of the equation, the revenue?
I think it was both, really.
Mr. Casey has a comment.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it was both. I think our initial thought was, we're building three buildings, and then we're going to have two kind of vacant pads, and that just didn't feel right from kind of treating that Hollister frontage. Once you get past those two vacant pads, which we're talking about today, they do have existing tenants on the remaining part of the property that's generating good income, so not as important in our mind to kind of get those done. So the question was, all right, can we kind of fill in those two vacant pads and not let them sit empty for a number of years until we accrue enough money to do the next phase? And that's where we came up with this loan and thought it was kind of in that sweet spot, like we said. The question of how much loan do you want the general fund reserves to be doing is the policy question. It's why we're here, to kind of check in with you, and then go to Finance Committee and have a deeper dive in it as well. But we liked the idea of kind of completing the first full segment by completing those two final buildings.
Well, thank you, that's a great clarification.
And just to add to that, it would be about 15 years before they can generate enough money to get to those other two buildings, so.
Okay. And then, obviously, the question would be, if you're thinking about refinancing the terminal loan, is there an opportunity to roll all of this into a new bond?
Well, I guess we could. We could look at that for sure. It'd be a little unusual to add more debt to refinancing, you know, we would just look at existing balances, same term, and just lower interest rate, but we could consider that.
Okay, well, we could, something to talk about at the Finance Committee meeting.
And the only thing would, you know, we'd be looking at a 20-year repayment on that, so it's spreading out this $3.5 million loan over 20 years. You want to pay over 20 years, higher more interest cost overall versus paying it off over nine years, because interest would be higher than 3.5%.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the infrastructure around the buildings and the pads and whatnot, is that to be completed in the first phase so that it doesn't, like, you get the first phase of the buildings, if, say, we're not, we don't do the second phase right away, will it, will there be, will it look like a vacant construction site? Will there actually be the sidewalks and the plantings and all those things that go out throughout the entire site?
Councilmember Rouse, so just kind of showing it to you visually here. So the Buildings 1, 2, and 3 kind of stop here, right after this curb cut. If we awarded Buildings 4 and 5, we would stop about here at this curb cut, and as Mr. Casey said, there's currently a building right about here, so there wouldn't really be any vacant space.
I was thinking more about the newly enhanced sidewalks and landscaping and all that along the, along the front of Hollister.
That's all included in the first, these three, first three buildings, yeah, all along here, and then the frontage here on David Love Place as well.
And then a question for Mr. Samario. So, Mr. Samario, when we do, we dip into the, into our reserves to make these loans, when we, we still obviously consider that an asset of the reserve, so we're not looking, when we target our reserves, they still count it as a part of the asset, right? We don't, they're not like a sequester.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, that's correct. When we measure reserves, we'll still count it as reserves, it's just money, that's cash that's not available, if, in an emergency, for example.
That's 3.5%, probably, is that exceeding what our loan portfolio, our investment portfolio is producing now, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, interest rates are rising. Right now, we could probably get close to 3%, perhaps 3% over a five-year term, so this would be nine years, 3.5%. So it's in the ballpark. We can't, we can't invest beyond five years.
Relatively short-term, you use the word capitalized interest. Can you expand on that for me?
Yeah, I wasn't really sure, but maybe Tom can explain that portion.
So we would need the loan essentially now, but the buildings wouldn't generate revenue for another year, so it would essentially be interest for that year while we were building the buildings until they could start generating revenue.
Right, but then the term still remains at nine years, is that the idea? Thank you.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, has this been done before, or with what frequency and what amounts have we borrowed from the general fund in this way?
Good question. It's not that frequent. We've done it in the past. I know that we, on a couple occasions, the general fund lent money to the waterfront. One time in the 80s, when they had a fire in the wharf and those to help rebuild it, and then, I think in the 90s or even later than that, when they built the waterfront offices, there was a $2 million loan to the waterfront to help in that construction. And then we've done smaller loans in the $1.5 million range to like the Gulf Fund or other funds. But this would be a large, one of the largest loans that I can remember doing from the general fund, but doesn't, to me, it doesn't create any problems or doesn't concern me.
Good. And I wasn't sure if you had talked about how the loans are secured. Your report said the airport development fund, or there was a couple of things that are a backstop for the public listening, that there's some security?
We know where they live, so we feel pretty confident that they're going to, they're going to pay back, and plus, I also control the money to some extent, so we can, we can help with that. Yeah, we're not concerned about that. The only concern we have, one of the provisions we would add in this resolution, would be that if there were, for example, a disaster, a major disaster, and that we really needed that cash in the general fund, and the airport wasn't impacted, we have a provision that says we can call the loan payable in full, and that would come out of airport reserves. They have enough reserves to cover this, but it would decimate their reserves if we used it all. They have somewhere around $4 or $5 million in reserves, but if we needed it and we had to have it, you know, we could call upon their reserves to repay that. That's the security I think we would want to have, but beyond that, I have no concerns about their ability to repay the money.
Okay, so the recommendation, we received the report, and we want, need to direct staff to go to the Finance Committee. So that's pretty much it, right? For transfer appropriation and repayment. So, Mr. Dominguez, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, and I've seen this, this presentation and this information at the Airport Commission as the liaison, so I'd make the staff recommendation A and B, which is to have it, the financial terms sent to Finance Committee and then brought back to City Council.
And that was a second from Councilmember Friedman. Any other discussion? I think we can take a general call. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. That closes that item. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item 12, Amendment to Montecito Water District Funding Agreement for Water Sales Agreement Negotiations.
Great. Ms. Bjork, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor Maria, Councilmembers. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, and I'm here today to ask for authorization to enter an amended agreement to fund negotiations with Montecito Water District around a water supply agreement, and I'll get into those details a little bit. So I'm going to go over the background of how we got here today, the overarching principles that your staff is presenting in our negotiations this, thus far with Montecito, the key terms of a water sales agreement, and then ask for council authorization of staff's recommendations. So by way of background, the desalination plant was originally built as an emergency plant from, during the 1989 to 92 drought, was put in service in 1992. It was a joint plant with Montecito Water District and Galleta Water District. However, at the end of the drought, council directed staff to do the permitting to convert it to a permanent facility, at which time both the districts withdrew from the project, and we went for it as a sole entity on that plant. It was permitted as, to be operated as a regional facility, but that's just one of the ways in which it can be operated. So those permits were secured in 1996, and council has kept them active since then, and we're grateful in this record-setting drought to have that water supply. In 2014, we were in the third year of a very dry, very hot drought, and we recognized the need to begin reactivation of the desalination plant. Right about then, Montecito first started talking to us about the potential to participate in receiving some of that water, and we had some preliminary conversations with them, but in August of 2016, we recognized that to have serious conversations was going to cost some money and that we should be sharing those expenses, and I'll talk a little bit more about what those are, but essentially, technical and legal expenses necessary to develop the information to enter into a water sales agreement that we would feel comfortable providing a strong commitment for. So we worked until about January or February of 2017, and had made some substantial progress as staffs, at which time, Montecito staff took the update to their board, back to their board, to get a agreement and authorization for funding a second phase of the funding agreement, which was really the money needed to design a conveyance pipeline. At that point in time, the Montecito District Board decided to pause negotiations and about, do some evaluation on their own on other supply alternatives. And then fairly recently, in January, February of this year, they, Montecito returned and said, we're ready to go back to negotiation, and their board did authorize a, the second part of the funding agreement, which is the money that's needed to design and, design a conveyance pipeline. So I'll talk a little bit about that in a second, but I wanted to just talk about the overarching principles that we've been bringing to the table thus far. Essentially, there are, we want to make sure that we can operate in a regional manner. The city believes strongly that regional planning for water supplies is in everybody's best interest, although we have borders and distinctions between our agencies. We really are one region. We share our water supplies, we share the risks of our water supplies, and we all function much better, as we saw during the recent emergencies, when we cooperate. So that's been an overarching principle, but to that, to the extent that we do that, we need to make sure that we're protecting our customers as well. And so we are making sure that our, we are creating an equitable agreement, but one that is, has full cost recovery, so that our customers are not in any way subsidizing other customers. And additionally, equally important, or probably even more important, is making sure that we are protecting the city's water supplies, so that the water that we would have available for Montecito is truly water that we can afford to give to them, and not doing so at the expense of our, our customers having water supply. So the key terms that we've been working around in our agreement discussions thus far have been the term of agreement. We are limited by a 50-year term. Montecito would like as long as possible, but the 50-year term is overriding consideration, and so that's where we are as staff. None of this is formalized. Please understand, this is just where we are in our negotiations. 50 years is acceptable to us. We certainly have a expensive piece of equipment out there, and having gone through the, not even through this drought yet, recognizing the value of that plant as a water supply. The volume of water that would be sold to Montecito on an ongoing basis is initially identified as 1,250 acre-feet per year. The source of water would be at the city's discretion, so it would give us a chance to essentially manage our supplies as one big lump, and we would take a look at where we had the excess supplies, with desal always at the backstop to be available if we, if we are short on other supplies. So we'd manage that, and so that we would be selling excess water. Risks such as natural emergencies would be shared equally between the two parties, so that if we don't, something beyond our control causes us to lose a water supply, we are not required to make that up from our own supplies when we're all potentially without water. And then conveyance. I talked a little bit about the design of a conveyance pipe. In order to make sure that we have a reliable supply to sell to Montecito, we really need to make sure that we can get desal water into the South Coast conduit, and in order to do that, we need a pipeline. So the conveyance pipe is fundamental to being able to assure both ourselves and Montecito that we have wet water to deliver. So that's a fairly expensive pipe to design and construct. We are proposing to share the costs of the design of that conveyance pipe 50/50, and this is what the second phase of the funding agreement, the amendment, really does, is it assigns those costs and agrees to go forward with the design. We, the city would front the costs, and Montecito would reimburse us. And then the last thing is the costs. I already said that the sort of principles for costs is that we would be selling the water to Montecito at a cost that meets our, our costs, so we wouldn't be subsidizing in any way. So the consultant technical support services that are authorized, or asking to be authorized in your report, are a contract with Corolla Engineers, who's the design engineer on the preliminary design, on the feasibility design of the plant. They have a lot of technical knowledge of the desal plant, and they are helping with conversations with IDE about how we would potentially generate additional water supply. Then the conveyance pipeline design is the larger part of that cost. The funding for these efforts would be shared equally with Montecito. They would, the city would prepay them, as I said, and we'd be reimbursed by Montecito. And then the city's portion of the funding would come from capital reserves. We do have adequate reserves above policy to apply to this effort. Another element of this is that we have had an ad hoc committee to advise staff on the negotiations. At your February 6 Council, you appointed Councilmembers Hart, Sneddon, and Dominguez to that committee. However, at that point in time, we weren't in active negotiations, so now that we are back in active negotiations, we wanted to just reconfirm that advisory committee and the appointments to that committee for the negotiations. So with that, staff is recommending the actions A through F, and even though there are more than three actions there, they really essentially just affect the amendment of the funding agreement, the approval of the technical contracts with Corolla Engineers, and the establishment of the ad hoc committee. And then the other, the other elements, as you will see, are about moving the money around to create appropriated money that we can use to pay these costs. With that, Mr. Hagmikka and I are here, if you have any questions.
Are there questions from the council? We have two public comments speakers, Phil Walker and Floyd Wicks, but, Mr. Dominguez, you have, do you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the sharing of the cost of the conveyance pipeline, what is the, the cost-sharing provision?
At this point in time, we've agreed to share the design costs equally, but we have not negotiated the cost-sharing provision for the pipeline itself. That's a big part of what still lies ahead.
And what went into the decision to share the cost of the design that way?
Just that at that point in the discussion, which was in August 2016, not really having a sense so much of what it was going to be, and that the design costs really are a relatively small portion of the overall project cost generally, that it just seemed like the easiest way to address it. We could spend a lot of time negotiating the proportionate share, but it wouldn't ultimately have come out have come out to be that much of a factor in the overall cost.
So if we don't end up entering an agreement, what happens then?
We will have a design for a conveyance pipeline that we will keep until such time as we need a conveyance pipeline, if we need a conveyance pipeline.
That we will have paid for half, and they will have paid for half?
That's correct.
And will they have the opportunity to ask for a refund for their half?
That's not contemplated in the funding agreement, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ms. Bjork, for the conveyance pipeline, is there any utility to this pipeline outside of serving the Montecito Water District?
Mayor Mariao, Councilmember Rouse, the pipeline does offer some benefits to the city, and it's possible that we would need this with or without Montecito. It's the timing issue. At this point in time, we don't need it but for Montecito. So the benefits it adds is that if we are generating more water in the low zone than we can absorb in the low zone, it allows us a way to get it out of the low zone and into Cater and then feed the entire city. It also has some water quality advantages, not only for us but for the districts, because of course we treat water for the districts, Montecito and Carpinteria at Cater, so by blending it there improves overall water quality. So there are benefits to the city as well, but given all of the impacts and costs to our water utility at this point in time, we would not be doing this if we didn't need to. We would wait until we actually had a strong driver for it, which at this point in time, it would be a nice benefit to us, but certainly there's no strong driver.
But it's anticipated that eventually it would probably be to our benefit to have the pipeline even?
Very much the same way that we kept the D-SAL plant available for an emergency. We would be having it ready for an emergency, so it's anticipated that there could be a need for it. Now, whether or not that would ever happen would be like the D-SAL plant would be keeping it ready to go if needed.
Thank you.
One of the questions I sent to you by email was that there's a conveyance pipe from the plant to Montecito, and then I was wondering about Cater. So is there two pipes? I was just...
So the conveyance pipe would, the proposal is that the conveyance pipe would go from the D-SAL plant to Cater.
To Cater, why?
And there is an existing pipe that takes treated water from Cater to Montecito, Carpinteria, and Summerland.
Okay. Thank you. I was trying to connect the dots there. So Mr. Walker, come on up. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I remember when I voted for the D-SAL plan, I think it was presented to the voters about the time Gibraltar reservoir went dry, about, I think, June 1989. It was definitely presented as a regional facility, and I think we're working back this way, and I'm firmly behind the negotiations with Montecito, and you just never know when the heavy foot of disaster might drop again. You could lose the California Aqueduct, especially with the condition of the levees in the valley, Central Valley, and the coastal branch, and, you know, they just came out recently and said that Hayward Falls is a tectonic time bomb, so this D-SAL plan is the best of regional insurance, and one of these days, the Galleta Water District might be knocking on the door too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wicks, come on up. You're with the Montecito Water District.
Yes.
We're pleased to have you.
I'm pleased to be here as well, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. First of all, a little bit of history. You've already gone through some of that with the slides here, but I do want to thank Josh and Rebecca personally for their kind of putting up with Montecito Water District, and I won't get into more detail than that. But nonetheless, there's been a lot of history here, and I think going forward, we want to really work more closely with the city. In the past, we have worked with the city, we being the Montecito Water District and through the Cater Treatment Plant. The city's been treating the district's water for going on 35, almost 40 years, so there is a tremendous history on working together. I think for a relatively short period of time, we weren't working so closely together. We want to mend some fences, which is one reason why Nick Turner and I are here. Nick Turner, General Manager for the Water District, is with me. We both are extremely appreciative of the effort the city put forth in helping our district go through a tremendous, real disaster earlier this year, and I can't say enough for Josh and Rebecca both in helping us to have as many people come from the city's water department to help us every day for probably going on close to a month. And we were faced with 26 fire hydrants that got sheared off by boulders. I don't know how many main breaks, but seven main breaks on our high line, we call it the 14-inch steel high line, just severed. Part of the pipe, we can't even find it. So I can't just thank you enough. We want to do a more formal thank you, but I'm here at least as one board member to say thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Secondly, we have been really, I think, a little bit behind the eight ball in planning, but we did file very recently, last year, I think, the urban water management plan for Montecito Water District. It shows that we have this particular water supply projected to be online by 2020, so that's the 1,250 acre-feet, that you'll find that in our urban water planning process. We also plan by 2025 to have completely reverse what we have had historically in terms of dependency upon rainfall for water supply. Roughly, in history, looking backwards, probably 15% of our water supply was not rainfall-dependent, 85% was. We want to really completely reverse that by 2025, and this agreement will take us a big step in that direction by having, you know, so much of our supply, practically a third of our sales would be from this source. And that takes us a long way to having drought-proof water supply for our small communities of Montecito and Summerland. So with that, I know my two minutes is up, but I'm pleased to answer any questions you might have, if you have any.
Sure, if you had anything else to say. I wasn't going to cut you off at two.
Oh, thank you.
We were in it together, right, after the debris flow, so...
Oh, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
But thank you again, and...
Mr. Hart does have a question, though.
Oh, sure.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you personally for your leadership at the district, and Mr. Turner as well. It's really been a pleasure working with you. I've had many conversations with you about this issue, and I think it is remarkable to turn around in relationships, and, you know, we have always been there as a neighbor for Montecito, and I've had a wonderful opportunity to help in this disaster, and I think having us working together in a regional way is better for both communities. It's better for the entire South Coast. We need to develop a water system that is more resilient for future events, that is focused on this side of the mountains rather than the other side of the mountains, because it is a tenuous connection that we have with the San Andres River, and this is a great step forward in that way. And I just really appreciate the work that you have personally done, Mr. Turner, to work with our staff and get closer to a resolution of this issue in a positive way.
Well, thank you very much, and if you ever have a major disaster like we did, we're going to be there to help you too, all 25 of us. So I'll be there with my hard hat on as well. And it's kind of crazy to say this, but here we are talking about D-SAL, and Nick and I both ran here in the rain to come to this meeting, so who knows?
Mr. Wicks, can I ask if you're, Mr. Wicks, can I ask if you're able to draw from Jamison Lake at this point? Or I know the Thomas Fire went right through there, and I know there's water quality impacts, but I should attend one of your meetings these days.
Oh, you're welcome.
And find out, okay.
Anytime.
Go ahead, Nick.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, Nick Turner, General Manager, Montecito Water District. We are currently delivering water. We have the ability to blend that water with tunnel intrusion, and we're blending it at a ratio that, at the moment, is treatable. We're still, though, assessing that as how to move forward. We're looking at possibly implementing some changes at our treatment process to help us improve the treatability of the water as well. So certainly is questionable at the moment, but yes, we are currently delivering some water from Jamison.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberations or a motion to get us going? Thanks. Mr. Dominguez?
So I'll mention some deliberation, but I also would want to thank General Manager Nick Turner for the hard work, and I'm sure it had to be just devastating to see your community devastated and your infrastructure to have to deal with both of those at the same time. You know, my hat's off to you and Vice President Wicks also, your board, for helping to steer the ship and for offering to come here with your hard hat when we need it. We will take you up on that offer. So that being said, that's the good news, I am worried about the history of the negotiation, and I think it was a former president who said, "Trust but verify." So I would only vote for paying for half of the design if there were some guarantees, for example, that if the agreement didn't go forward, that we would be reimbursed for our costs. So that would be, at the very least, a minimum. I would want to find out more, maybe through our ad hoc committee, about why we're bearing the costs and what percentage would seem more appropriate. So that would be, I think, my starting point with this.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I've had the opportunity to serve on the ad hoc committee for quite some time with Councilmember White and Mayor Schneider, and I can tell you that there is definite independent utility to this pipeline that the city has an interest in paying for, to have available for the future events, as Ms. Bjork described. And these negotiations have been difficult, but they are making great progress, and I think in the spirit of moving forward, understanding our interest and our staff's ability to protect our interests in the context of negotiations, I would move the staff recommendation.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We'll take a second from Councilmember Sneddon. Mr. Rouse, your thoughts, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was going to agree with what Mr. Hart's point was, and actually, Mr. Walker brought up another interesting issue as well, is maybe someday, regionally, if something does happen to our state water supply, Galleta won't be knocking on the door. So this kind of infrastructure going forward and the independence we can gain in this little coastal strip, whether it's in power or water or whatever it is, is going to be important, no matter what we do going forward. I would like to have a, I know it's a bit of a crystal ball at this point in time, but a big picture as we look going forward at, you know, obviously, the eventual costs of this project as it gets built, as well as the build-out of the rest of the capacity of the D-SAL plant, if in fact we do get to be a truly regional water supply that's more dependent on. And I know those are kind of pie-in-the-sky numbers, but it is a conversation, I think, going forward that certainly a lot of the public's very curious about, and I certainly am as well, because it is something that, we said, we may become more and more dependent on as time goes on. So I would like to see at some point in the future, even if they're just conversational projections.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we will have that kind of information. Of course, Montecito is also interested in that in terms of finalizing this agreement. So we will certainly have that for you at some point in the future, and it would certainly be information that was presented at the time we entered into a water supply agreement.
Right. Thank you.
I don't see any other lights, and I'll vote for the motion. My acknowledgement is that I wish the D-SAL plant didn't use so much power, and there's environmental impacts created by our intake system, and I wish that we had a different, a subsurface intake. But we're in a case where this is an independent water supply. You're absolutely correct about the unpredictability of precipitation, and we need this for our residents, and you're coming to us so that you can have it for your residents, and I'm pleased that Councilmember Dominguez will be on that ad hoc subcommittee to keep an eye on things, as he's expressed his concerns today, and I acknowledge his concerns. So why don't we take a roll call vote? And Mr. Dominguez, you have something else to add?
So I mentioned the option of having part of the agreement such that if we don't reach an agreement that we're reimbursed for our costs is, are any other council members interested? Would Mr. Hart accept a friendly amendment?
No, that is not part of my motion.
Okay. Does any other council member want to add in that protection, given the history? Okay.
Thank you for your diligence. Go ahead, please. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Mayor Mariao? Aye. So that was...
That passes 5-1 with a no from Councilmember Dominguez.
Very good. Thank you so much. Yes, let me know when your next meeting is. We'll drop in. Thank you. So we're down to council member committee assignment reports, and I've seen you all at a bunch of events lately. So, Mr. Rouse, you go ahead and start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, last Wednesday, our finest, including Officer Alabak, they were serving lunches at my place at the Paradise Cafe during Tippecop, and it's always kind of fun to see some very large people wearing badges and guns, walking around, trying to serve little iced teas with lemons on them. But very, very successful, raised a lot of money for Special Olympics, and some of the Special Olympians participated as well. So it was fun working with our personnel in blue.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon?
Last week, I attended with several other council members a Natural History Museum and CEC joint event on drought, fire, and flood, and a lot of, it is available online for those who couldn't attend, and a lot of discussion about resiliency of the city, but also where that intersects with public policy and planning, so I think it's relevant for all of us. Attended PATH meeting with Mayor Mariao, I'm sure you'll discuss more about that. CCRB, we had another special meeting. We're continuing to work with the Bureau of Reclamation and hoping to update council in closing session on that soon, and also attended the founding day at the Presidio with Mayor Mariao and Councilmember Hart.
Great. Mr. Friedman?
I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Dominguez for getting a May shave, and he inspired me to get a May haircut, so...
That's right, yeah.
And, but in all seriousness, I attended a group of homeless advocates on the Mesa that meet regularly just to share information about homeless providers, and one issue that came up there at the federal level, there are reductions to some of our most at-risk, and those who have basically no income and they're at risk of having their income tripled from $50 to $150 for rent, and so it's some of our most at-risk individuals in the community if what is being proposed at the federal level were to pass, so that's a concern going forward. Also attended the grand opening of the Carousel House reception, so it's no longer a carousel there, but it's now a city parks facility that is available for public use and the public to rent. It's a great facility down in the waterfront, and you can book it through our Parks Department. It's a great asset for our community. Also attended the Lacumbra Junior High School Gateway Ribbon Cutting, which was a very important project. It's the gateway to the west side. The issue of accessibility came up today, so it enhances accessibility to the junior high campus and also just the front facade that comes out and is part of the high school. It's a very pride, there's a lot of pride from the foundation, the community there, and I want to especially thank the Lacumbra Junior High Foundation, in particular Cliff Lambert, for all his work on there. And on Sunday, attended the Coalition Against Gun Violence Annual Reception, and they are a great organization, and we saw what they're doing here today in terms of the gun buyback program and national advocacy, and talked about the issue of mental health and guns and how we can reduce gun violence. And lastly, I was at the Central Coast Water Authority Monthly Board Meeting and report out from that. A couple of major items, we're still waiting for a written comment from the Department of Water Resources on whether or not they support the transfer of the contract from the county to the Central Coast Water Authority. At this point, it's only been verbal. There's still some issues they're looking at. We're trying to understand what they are, and until then, those negotiations aren't taking place with the county at this time until there's something writing from the state. And the twin tunnel went down to the one tunnel, now it's back to the twin tunnel project, so that's coming back as a twin tunnel. And then they're looking at contract amendments to the state water project, and some of the operational are looking at water transfers and exchanges and having more flexibility for jurisdictions that are... more flexibility for jurisdictions that are trying to buy and sell water, especially in times of drought. There are a lot of benefits for, for those to be, do straight exchanges or transfers. And the last one has to do with the finance, the financial component of the contract. And this is really complicated. It was an hour and a half, so I'm going to try to boil it down into a few seconds here.
Go ahead.
But the contract expire, our, our contract expires in 2035, so we may have 17 years left. And there's a, there is discussion about extending the contract into state water to 2085. The major concern is that if we don't do that, that there could be some potential debt liabilities for us the next 17 years. One, if the Cal Water Fix Program does go forward, and then also with Orville Dam, they're estimating somewhere in the vicinity of a billion dollars to do the upgrades to it. And because that's such a large portion of, of state water, the contracting agencies and the water users would, would have to bear those costs. So if we're only in the, if we didn't extend the contract beyond 2035, you can only amortize those costs down to 17 years, and those could be huge liabilities. So we're trying to understand what the best path forward is into extending that contract. Like I said, it was very complex, and that's the, the simple version of it. So that's where I was this last week.
Very good. Mr. Dominguez?
I think I was at a couple of those with you, the Coalition Against Gun Violence and the Carousel House reception. I also attended the Disaster Readiness Workshop at Franklin Elementary School and the Hospitality Santa Barbara Luncheon, Awards Luncheon with Mayor Mario as well. And the, one of the awardees was Abe Powell accepting one of the awards on behalf of the Bucket Brigade. Several of the organizers were there with him. Attended the Downtown Santa Barbara Public Safety Committee meeting and went to the Housing Authority Board Meeting where they had a strategic planning session, looked at some of their upcoming ideas. And I also attended the United Nations Association.
Mr. Dominguez, the Housing Authority is opening its list again, right, for vouchers and for HUD to get, to get on the list for housing? So it's a big deal. And did you hear about that? I, I meant to...
They opened the list, I think part of it is they've, they've gone through and taken out some of the people who no longer qualify or want to be on the list, so the number shrank, and so they're putting a few more people back on there. Doesn't mean that there's much new housing available, but hope springs eternal.
I, I know. If people can get on the waiting list, I think that's a, a big step for a lot of people. So anyone out there, contact the housing, the city Housing Authority, and I think the county Housing Authority as well. So don't miss your opportunity to get an application in. Councilmember Hart and I were part of the Chocolate Divine fundraiser for the group formerly called the Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center, and they've renamed themselves Standing Together to End Sexual Assault. And always a good event. The Hotel Californian had a grand opening, and I'm so proud that we have revitalization in that area of State Street and our waterfront. The Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse had a panel discussion for parents and teens about drug use and recovery, and that was right before the climate change event. So I ran around town trying to get to both, and that's it. So we don't have a closed session, and if there's no other comments, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks.